Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock and it's Monday, November 27th, and we're gathered here as the Board of -- the Select Board at the All-Purpose Room of the Firehouse. I'm Tom Jacobs and have the pleasure of being Chair of this esteemed Board. I think that tonight, could we just introduce ourselves? Maybe you'll start down. Gene? Sure. Well, Stuart Hurd is also on the right. And Linda Perbute is our reporter today.
Thank you.
And I'm Jean Conner.
Carson Thober.
Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hello, I'm Jeanie Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Thank you very much, folks. I think we'll open it with a Pledge of Allegiance. Chad, would you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Great. We have a consent agenda that's been circulated, which includes the minutes from the November 13th meeting and the warrants, which also have been circulated to us earlier. I'm certainly happy to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So, second?
Any discussion questions, observations relative to grammatical errors or additions?
Nope. Nope, all good. Good.
If hearing none, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
That's seven in favor, no opposition. And now it's our pleasure to discuss issues that are not on the agenda with any citizen that would like to share thoughts, concerns, and ideas with us. And I see that we have Al Bajefkin, who's going to have a discussion with us relative to propane cars parked on their side of town. And you live on Settlers Road?
Yes.
So it's not too far from your house. Al, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. So I was kind of surprised to see all these black cars in our neighborhood, right at the intersection of Rice Lane. There's a railroad crossing there. And the cars were on both sides of Rice Lane, both to the north and to the south.
Is that where they used to have the graffiti-covered cars a couple of years ago?
They -- probably. But I don't think that they were hazardous cars. I mean, there wasn't hazardous waste in those cars.
I'm being a little cynical, but I don't mean to. Go ahead.
So, I mean, I was really especially concerned about the houses that were 20, 30 feet from where the rail lines were, and thinking that if something happened, they were really in jeopardy. And then I came back from Thanksgiving time away and I looked and they moved some of the cars. And they've moved them closer to town and a little bit away from our neighborhood. But I still wonder what the town's responses to having the cars there is. It appears as if the rail lines, which, you know, I really support, and I think it's great to have trains and transportation and all that, but I know the rail industry isn't doing as well as it had done 50, 60 years ago. And it seems like their lines are now being rented out for storage. And unfortunately, right now, they're being rented out for hazardous storage. And I know that folks that have moved within proximity of the rail cars didn't really choose to move near hazardous storage facility. So I think that that's of concern. It's of concern to me, and I know it's of concern to others. And I also know there's an awful lot of players in this. And the rail companies are very powerful. But I think we have a voice, and I'd love to hear what our voice is.
Excellent points, and I appreciate your earlier comments you shared with the town manager and the like, because I'm not aware of any licensing or permits for a propane facility in that area. And I'm sure there is not one. So the real question is, what should and can we do about propane tanks being stored in an area that is not conducive for the public health and benefit of our community? I think it's -- you probably have already done your homework. The jurisdiction of the town per se may be somewhat limited. That is not to say, though, that we have no interest or responsibility to take the mantle and run with it. I think if the rest of the Board, I want to hear everyone's comments, but in the final analysis, I would like to communicate to the powers that be, meaning our -- both our state and congressional contingent and the Governor, and maybe others, relative to our immediate concern. Because this is not something that is appropriate for a community like ours. When you drive up Route 7, you can see a propane depot off the road in relatively rural area, where you're talking about is a highly built-up congested area. And it's really not, from my perspective, and I think the rest of ours, a satisfactory response, at least what we've seen so far.
Yeah. And, well, you know, I'm sure Bennington isn't alone. I'm sure this is happening in other parts of the Northeast where propane, the prices are down, the production is up. They've got to put it somewhere. So, you know, they've got to store it somewhere. In 2015, Charlotte grappled with this issue as well. I'm not quite sure what the resolution was. But you're not alone, and there are other communities that have been grappling with this.
Well, I'd like to cut right to the chase on this. Stu, I hope you can give an answer on this. But who has direct oversight on those railroad tracks? Is it the town, or the state, or both?
Actually, it's the Federal Trade Commission. They're governed by federal rules. The state of Vermont owns the railroad rights of way, but the railroads, Vermont Railway is the one that is generally on the westerly side of the state, has a contract with the state for the use and maintenance of all of the rail tracks that are considered to be passable. And unfortunately, this spur, although it's not used any longer for transportation or deliverables to the community, is still considered an active railroad. And Vermont Railway is the one that owns the cars and is storing the material there. They approached, when they decided to do this, they apparently approached the North Bennington Village Fire Department and the Bennington Rural Fire Departments, and developed a plan for maintenance and checking. Unfortunately, they didn't notify the town. We found out the same way most everybody finds out when they cross the railroad tracks and you look on both sides. And there are tanks, tankers that are running for as far as the eye can see. So David Bond from Bennington College was the first to contact me, because he had been contacted by others. And I directed him to the Senators Campion and Sears, and Representative Corcoran, who's on the House Transportation Committee. I think collectively, they have approached the Governor's Office, and the Governor's Office is involved. But it's a situation, I think, without legislation or legislative authority, all we can do, or all the Governor can do, is to try to negotiate with Vermont Railway to be a little bit more considerate of its neighbors. And I think what we've seen now is they more than likely, either they have pulled some of the cars out, or they have pushed them further south. So they're no longer directly adjacent to those residences. But they are still -- there's a long line of them still there.
Is there any restrictions with respect to the amount of time they can park them?
No.
Nothing?
No.
But, you know, those are questions that I think are appropriately made and probably should be addressed to the state and federal. And I think we should communicate our concern relative to full propane tank cars parked basically in our residential areas, albeit somewhat rural. Sometimes you can get at least attention that we're not getting right now. But as Stu said, as a community, we have more job-owning ability than we have legal, at least apparently. And I'd like to hear everybody's.
Tom, I'm wondering if we could also, I don't know if it should be in writing or oral, but it'd be nice to hear from fire departments, just in terms of what their risk assessment is and what the -- sort of what plans they have in place? Because it sounds like they did put contingency plan in place with VTRAM, with Vermont Railway.
Yeah. Can we get that, their emergency response plan or whatever agreement is?
Sure. I'll contact both the Village and the Rural Fire District and see if we can get their plan of attack.
Then you can share it with the Board and the public as appropriate.
Jean? Is the contract available to the public to view?
The state's contract with Vermont Railway?
Yeah.
I imagine that it is.
Okay. I'm just curious if there's, you know, it's propane. It's something that's, you know, flammable and extremely dangerous. And is there a difference between storing something like that versus something that's not hazardous? The other thing I would -- so, it sounds like citizens who are concerned should contact the Senators and legislators and the Governor.
And we should too.
And we should too. Okay.
Again, I hear you.
And the other thing, I mean, it's clearly hazardous, and that's first and foremost my biggest concern. It's also just an eyesore for those poor people who have to look at them every time they look out their windows and drive into their driveways. And, you know, it's just another little added inconvenience or, I don't know, just makes it even worse that they have to look at them in addition to being concerned about the flammability of the propane.
I agree with everything, of course. I'm a little anxious about taking action without having it being part of the agenda, but maybe we could do something that would be something short of that and begin the process of squawking.
Maybe a draft letter that you two would create?
I'd like to have it come from the Manager's Office for all of our approval review. And I don't want to have to have a special meeting for this. And I don't really see that's necessary. Sort of like a consensus, we think we want to do this versus, you know.
Can I ask one word? So do we know from Vermont Railway's, they're aware, I mean, so they are aware that there's a concern because they've already been contacted?
If you read the front page story in the banner, there was a comment from Vermont Railway's project manager, whatever you want to call them, about how they had planned and what safety precautions they were taking with this material. So, yeah, they're aware, and they're aware that legislators are unhappy, and legislators are looking at perhaps developing legislation that might attempt to deal with this. The problem you run into with this is the whole state, federal arena, and whose jurisdiction is it really? And I can practically guarantee you that the state's contract with Vermont Railway doesn't deal with specifics as to what can be stored, where, and everything else, because...
It just feels like they should be part of the communication loop, like that it's more than just contacting our legislators. It's also letting Vermont Railway know that there is concern. Because maybe there's another way they can find -- my understanding is they wanted to spread propane, they wanted to make propane available in different parts of the state, and so they were being proactive by storing it in various places. And so the intent was good, it's just the outcome is not so good. So, you know, maybe this is more thinking.
The unfortunate part is Vermont Railway has been using this in this area for storage of cars, whether they're empty or loaded, for years and years and years. And unless legislation somehow permits us or the state to do something about it, we really, we can talk to the powers that be and express our concerns, but I'm not sure that we can actually do anything.
Stu?
Sorry to go ahead. No, you're --
Jump in. But this is the first instance of hazardous waste that they've stored on those tracks?
Well, it's flammable.
To my knowledge.
It's flammable. I think there's a difference between hazardous waste and flammable waste. This is flammable waste. Yes, it is hazardous to people's health if it goes up, but when we talk about propane storage, it's a flammable material, and that's what the markings are on the car so indicate. But you're right, yes, this is totally different than empty rail cars that just sit there for months on end. You're absolutely right. But I'm not sure that the law or the state's contract or differentiates in any way.
Senator Campion has been in touch with me about this, and I know he's speaking with the powers that be. And, you know, I just hope, maybe there's a line between regular storage and flammable or hazardous storage, and that somehow that that can be communicated and enacted.
I would like to think so. I mean, I've obviously been copied on most of the emails between and among Senators Sears, Senator Campion, the Governor's Office. And I'm hopeful that there can be a determination that prohibits this kind of storage in the future, but I just don't know.
We'll keep you in the information pipeline. If you could do the same for us?
Will do.
You've been doing your research, and the more that we can have that dialogue, the more attention we can maybe get to the subject. But I'm sorry we can't say. We're going out there tomorrow and we'll share.
Move the cars.
Yeah. But it is a concern.
Okay.
So go from there now. I appreciate your coming.
Thanks for your time.
And Stuart, it would probably help us to have you keep us up, whatever the legislators are saying to you.
I'll try to pull as much information together as far as the emergency management plan that's in place, and perhaps put some thoughts onto paper as to how we might respond.
That'd be great.
I worry sometimes that if I drafted, it's in my words and not in yours, but we'll get through that.
Is that all right, folks?
Yes, that's good.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Thanks, Al. I guess the first item, unless there are other citizens that didn't have a chance to sign in, would like to chat with the Board. We have our signup sheet, but I only saw one name on it. But is there anyone else that would like to talk about things that aren't on the agenda? If not, we'll get right into the agenda for tonight. We have the first item dealing with our engineers, Aldrich and Elliott, Step Two, the wastewater treatment facility upgrade contract. And Stu, you're going to talk with, and Wayne's going to be involved in that.
Yes. Wayne will actually probably do most of the presentation. You're all familiar with Wayne Elliott of Aldrich and Elliott. He's joining us here tonight to talk about the Step Two Wastewater Treatment Facility Upgrade, which is a project that's actually running parallel to the RBC replacement. And we've been through this, and it is somewhat confusing. But this is, in fact, what the state is insisting that we do, and in order for them to begin their process, and actually they've been on-site doing some site work already, so once again, they're out ahead of the gun just a little bit. But in this particular case, Wayne's here tonight to talk to you about the actual agreement, and I'm seeking your authorization to sign it on behalf of the Town of Bennington. And that way, we can begin to reimburse Aldrich and Elliott for the work they're going to be doing for us.
And this is the Professional Engineering Services Agreement that you circulated as part of our package?
Yes, this was in the package.
And as Jean advises, that there are no attachments of the exhibits which would make it rather voluminous.
Yeah. The attachments to which this refers are all part of, in a sense, the boilerplate portion of the contract. And you saw last time we talked about this kind of an agreement. The agreement is only a few pages long, but the boilerplate is 30 pages thick or more. And I didn't think it was appropriate to send it on to you. So if you have, I would direct your questions and your concerns to Wayne, but it's relatively straightforward. We talked about this a little bit the last time on November 13th with Jason Booth from his office as well. So Wayne?
Go ahead, Wayne. Keep us out.
Good, okay. So Stu said, so tonight, separate, we've got the RBC replacements, and we've got the other part of the bond authorization, the wastewater upgrade. So tonight, it's just the wastewater upgrade portion of it. As Stu mentioned previously too, because of these projects are both on different timetables and schedules, the state is requiring we handle them as separate loan applications from the overall construction piece. I had hoped to have this in front of you at the last meeting, but I hadn't had the state complete the review of the Engineering Services Agreement and review of the fees, and I just got that here about a week ago, so that's why the delay for tonight. So that part of the project, again, total budget is 5.3 million. All the costs we're talking about are included in that project budget from the Engineering Services side. At your last meeting, you approve the, what we call the Step Two, which is the Final Design Planning Own Application, and that request was for a total of $266,000. That included an allowance of $248,500 for the Step Two Engineering Services. It included $12,500 for the asbestos lead paint inspection, $3,000 for permit fees, and $2,000 for legal. So again, all those are within the overall project budget of that 5.3 million. Typically, what we do with our Engineering Services Agreement, we have to use this form, the terms and conditions and everything on here developed by the state. We're actually unable to change those. So the custom part of this is really in the scope of services and the fees. They take this agreement, they review the scope of services, they look at the hours and the fees, make sure they're appropriate. And we did receive their approval on this agreement on November 15th, so they basically deemed it's acceptable for the Board's consideration.
Great.
As Stu said, we've taken on our own risk, a little concerned about being up against the weather. We had snow here the last couple of days, and it's probably here to stay, so we've already started to get out and do some of the field survey. We just want to get a jump on things with the weather. I was going to briefly walk you through what's in the Engineering Services Agreement. The total here is $246,500. We are slightly below the original budget amount. The fee also came down a couple thousand dollars with the state review. They had a couple suggestions on meetings, so that was taken out. And typically, what this includes is three major parts. We're calling the basic services Final Design. The majority of that work is really putting the contract documents and specifications that are already for bid purposes. Then we have subsurface investigation, and then we have what we call special services, and that includes three items: permitting assistance, asbestos lead paint coordination, and then we've got non-destructive testing. So if you're going into the attachment number one, the scope of services, under the first piece, the basic services Final Design, we've got the field survey. We've got two days of field survey plus field edits. We have two days, we actually go through all the existing buildings. Now, this is specific to the new screening structure, the NRV congestion upgrades, and again, the control building addition. We put the design criteria together. The majority of this is really putting the Final Design Plans and specifications together. And part of the reason why the fees on something of this is so significant is we have several players on the project team. So when you're looking at the drawings, we have the civil site yard piping. We have a structural engineer that's going to help us with the new screening structure, everything to do with the control building, the foundation and the roof. We have an architectural component, so we're going to have floor plans. We need to spec windows, roof, doors. We need to do that for the screening structure, and also the control building addition. We have the process-related work. That's all the new equipment, process piping valves that go along with that. We have the mechanical. We have the plumbing, heating, ventilation, again, for all three of those structures. We also have electrical. And then the last piece, we have the controls piece. So one of the pieces of the scope of work was a new plant PLC SCADA system. So it's a pretty thick set of contract documents and drawings when we get done. And again, the reason for that with the complexity, you know, we've obviously got to do a level of design here so the GC can bid it appropriately and build it. The other things we do have in here is we have to do, and we do this multiple times throughout the design phase, is roughly about a six to seven month process. We're looking at getting this out to bid next April or May. We put an updated construction cost together. You know, we keep track. We put an overall construction phase schedule together. We're required to have multiple design meetings, and the first one of these, a 30% is going to be around Christmas, probably Christmas week, and that's with the state and also the town staff. We then need to do a 60% meeting, a 90% review meeting, and we can come back at the end of this if the Select Board is kind of interested in the final presentation. On special services for permitting, we need to submit a basis of design for the improvements that needs to be approved by the wastewater division. We need to submit the applications for the state construction permit for the Division of Fire Safety. We have the stormwater runoff, town site plan approval. We need to do something for the new screening structure and the control building addition. You know, and then we have allowances in here for public meetings, site visits. Also, as part of this, which is a separate piece of the work, we have a separate allowance, but we need to do an asbestos lead paint inspection. So for the existing headworks, the digestion, control building, we need to identify those areas where we're going to require asbestos abatement, you know, lead paint that's going to be part of the construction process. And then lastly, we're going to have somebody go in and check the metal thicknesses, which you call non-destructive testing on the three primary digester steel covers. Again, if we find they're sufficient, we can refinish one, two, or all three, and we can save some money there versus replacement. So that's something we've also included. So that's pretty much the overall scope of services. As I said, the rest of this document is really primarily the state terms and conditions. A lot of this, again, we can't change, but the state has reviewed and approved this agreement. So, you know, this is really here for the, you know, Board's consideration tonight.
Great. Thanks, Wayne. On the face page of the contract, there's actually the $246,500, which you've referenced, and there's the listing of the various services. The abbreviations next to those, like, is it not to exceed? Or what is that?
That's correct. So the first item, basic, is $226,700. That's a lump sum. The rest of the items, the subsurface investigation is $7,400. That's a not to exceed. And all the special services items are also not to exceeds. So basically, the difference there is we're just putting into those, you know, what we need to expend. And I can assure you, if we don't need to put those in for the subsurface, we're done in a day instead of two, we just bill out to that, whatever we need to put into it to get the task done.
Great. Thanks.
That's true on the not to exceed items, but not a lump sum item.
That's correct. That's right.
And is it industry standard? And we've been told by our staff that you're very reliable, and we're really happy to have you on the job. But is it industry standard to do a lump sum quote on something like that instead of a not to exceed number, which would have had a potential lower downside?
Yeah, it is. That's pretty standard for the design. And part of that, generally what we do is we bill on a percent complete as we go through it. And I can assure you there too, the percent complete you're going to see is generally what we put into the project at that time. For example, if we're 25%, I'm not billing you 40, 50% for cash flow purposes. We'll typically bill as we're putting the effort in. Part of the reason for that is there's a lot of parts and pieces to that fee. I've got numbers from all my subconsultants. You know, a good part of that is my architect, my structural engineer, the mechanical. We don't have those disciplines in-house, so we subcontract all that. But it's firms, local Vermont firms, that we worked with on wastewater for 15 or 20 years. It just makes it a little bit simpler than to try to track. But it is typically on a design, the standard, to bill that on a lump sum basis. And the state's fine with that. The other thing, I guess, which you may find of interest, is we submit a tasking level of effort with all the hours and all the fees. They look at the whole thing, whether it's a lump sum or not to exceed, and just make it sure it's appropriate and fits within the budget. They have what they call a curb allowance that we have to stick to, which is a percent of the construction cost. So they're making sure the hours and everything we've got in there is appropriate for the work that's intended.
Jack?
No, I'm happy with the, this contract looks good. Jaxler gave me an excellent idea for my answer, one class one, trying to figure out 25% of the building. Great problem for tomorrow, so thank you.
Jeanne?
No, thank you.
I just had, the refinishing versus replacing on the three units?
Yep.
Significant? Can you, what's the difference in price? It just caught my ear when you said that.
That's a good question. And we're probably going to look at it both ways. And the reason for that is sometimes, like in this case with the covers, it's not like it's maybe not be a 50% reduction. You know, we want to weigh the age of that cover, too. You know, it may only cost 15 or 20% to go from refinishing an existing cover to a new cover. And obviously, when we're looking at something like this, you know, with a 25, 30-year life, especially in those covers, it just may make sense to do that. So that's a discussion we'll have during the design process.
I was just curious when you said it, so just...
Yep. But one of the things we're trying to do there with the non-destructive testing is what we're doing is we're checking the existing metal thickness to see what the wear, the deterioration. If we find something or spots that are really just unreparable, that doesn't give us a choice. But if it looks okay, I'd like to still look at those options and just see what the cost differential is, and that's something we can have some more discussion on, so.
Great. On, let's see, what page is it? I guess the second page. There's a statement, it is understood that the engineers' labor rates are adjusted annually in January. So I'm assuming that you've obviously built those increases into the budget and...
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
It wouldn't, for some odd reason, be different than what it's been traditionally?
No. Absolutely. We're only approved to what's here.
Okay.
The only thing that, and we typically wouldn't even raise that as an issue, but I could see the only time that that came into play, let's say something odd happened that was kind of out of our control. I just had St. Olavens put a design on hold back in 2014. So if we put that on hold and we come back a year and a half later, then that's probably a different discussion. But we all know what the timetable and the timeframe and schedule is. So no, that's all included in the fees you see on the first page.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to hear a motion for authorization to enter into the agreement with the engineer, with Aldrich and Elliott, for the Town of Bennington wastewater treatment facility upgrades for the final design for Step Two pursuant to the agreement that has been circulated and discussed tonight.
So moved.
Second? Any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the agreement as circulated and discussed, signify by aye.
Aye.
That's seven in favor. And carry on, and hopefully it doesn't snow before...
Yep, we're ready to go. Moving forward, full speed ahead.
Right. No more fines. That's right.
And I'm going to step away from the table just so I can sign these agreements, and Wayne can carry them back to the...
Okay. Yep. The next item is Dan's. Dan Monks is going to talk about the actual hazard mitigation plan adoption, which is not the first time we've had this discussion. But it's probably time to get on with approving it.
Yes. So thank you very much, as the chairman has identified. This is at least the second time that I'm before you with the Town of Bennington Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a plan that was developed by Bennington County Regional Commission staff in accordance with FEMA guidelines, and it has been approved by the Bennington Planning Commission. In addition to planning for dealing with hazards, the importance of having this plan in place is it does give us additional funding in the case of emergency response funding, additional percentages from the state. There are three levels of funding. You'll recall, maybe some of you, in Irene, the state typically, the feds typically cover 75%, and then the state and municipality split the 25% depending, it's different for every state. The way that the state does it now is they default to 7.5% of that match is covered by the state if you don't do anything as a municipality. That can go up to 12.5%, and it can go up further to 17.5%. With this particular, with the adoption of this hazard mitigation plan, we are guaranteed the 17.5% highest amount that the state will give of that share that's not covered by the federal government. We actually are already eligible for that because this has been approved by FEMA. Pending your approval, it will become permanent, but God forbid if a disaster happened tomorrow, we'd be locked in, even if you guys did vote tonight. But I'm hoping that you will vote tonight to adopt it. Just a quick recap on the hazard mitigation plan. It really is about 99% of this document is demographics, historic data on hazards, including windstorms, winter storms, flooding, of course, our number one hazard, any hazardous release of materials, invasive species, et cetera. So most of this is just documentation of past events and some sort of discussion of what might happen in the future and how we can deal with it. Page 62 is where we really get the meat of the plan, where we list several action items that the town is actually taking already, most of them. There are a few that we still need to work on. But that's really where the meat of the plan is. Nothing in there that I think is terribly onerous. It's really all common sense stuff that we should be doing in order to protect ourselves from the hazards we all know about, mostly in our case, flooding and winter storms and wind damage. But like I said, there are certain other things in there that you might not think about, but we also tried to address. So my request this evening, if you folks feel comfortable, would be to formally adopt this hazard mitigation plan by signing the resolution that was included in your packet. And I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have about the hazard mitigation plan.
Would it have made a difference if we had something like this in place for Irene?
No, in fact, we got the maximum amount because at that time, we met all the requirements. And in fact, at that time, we did have a much less in-depth hazard mitigation plan, but one that was approved by FEMA. This is a significant additional effort from that plan that was in place at that time.
Has this plan at all changed from the last version that we saw?
No. There have been no changes, except for some typos and some correction in facts, but no changes in the action items on the suggested goals, et cetera.
Good. I confess to not having read it a second time. It was tedious enough the first time, and then I had confidence that the Bennington Regional Planning Commission spent a lot of time and energy on this before. So this is one of those benefits that we get as a participating entity with the county regional commission. Yeah, it's great. It's a great effort. It seems like it's well done. The 17 and a half percent seems like a good thing. I'd make a motion that we adopt the plan as written. Second? Could we adopt the resolution for adoption without, waive the reading of it as part of it? Let's make that part of the motion.
Yes.
Okay, that way? Okay. All in favor of the resolution of adoption as presented in our packet, signify by aye. That's seven in favor and no opposition. We will so execute it pursuant to that.
Thank you very much.
Please let the regional commission know how much we appreciate this body of work. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the agency funding policy, which we, as you know, and talked about that for a couple of sessions, and we had different versions, revisions, and discussions about how we can deal with the various agency requests, and how the public can be made aware of both the benefit and the expense, whether they go to check yes or no on the March town meeting. It's been interesting to see some of the circulation, and I appreciate Jeanne and Gene for getting that out there. Why don't we turn it over to Stu, and he can update us on where we're at and where we might want to go, and we can have discussion on filling in the pieces so that the agencies have some comfort level that we're going to be doing right there.
Thank you, Tom. What's before you is really what appeared before you two weeks ago. I haven't made any changes. In a sense, I was waiting to see what the pair of Jeans would do with their research. It is an interesting question, and one that we've talked about at length, specifically with regard to what we call the Level Two funding requests, which were 7,500 or less. Forcing them to the petition every two or three years does, in a sense, force them out into the community to gather support. But with the Secretary of State's ruling that they can all join onto one petition as long as they're listed separately and their funding request is listed alongside, it means that each agency needs to get 30 or 40 signatures, which reduces the effort on the part of the agency. And perhaps, you know, perhaps it's time we looked at this realistically. These agencies do not suffer defeat. They generally pass anywhere from two and a half to three and a half to one. And the question, I think, and Jeanne and I talked earlier today, Jeanne and I talked earlier today, is how do we, if it is our responsibility, how does the town get the word out as to what those agencies are accomplishing, if anything? And of course, we think they are accomplishing things, as does the community, because they continuously support them. So maybe, Jeanne, I'd like you to talk a little bit about some of your thoughts that you have today.
Okay. So Jeanne and I sent out an email to nonprofits, to a number of nonprofits, just saying, give us your feedback on the things that you care about, you think, you know, that are happening in other communities where you're receiving funding, and also just what are your thoughts about everything from petitioning to what you'd like the public to know? And we also contacted Town of Manchester, which has a pretty...
Elaborate.
Elaborate, yes. And very thorough process for everything from when money is dispensed to the requirements for nonprofits to request funding. And it seems, it does seem like the petitioning, the petitioning piece of it is more of a hoop and less of a, and doesn't have a whole lot of value beyond an initial hoop.
Yeah, so like you'd rather see them in the community doing services rather than going through the hoop.
Yeah. So for instance, in Manchester, it looks like they do require new nonprofits that are requesting funding to go out to the community and petition. But then after that, they can, an organization can write a letter and request that they not have to petition, but instead be put on the ballot as long as the amount that they're requesting has not changed from the amount that they petitioned for the first time. And that seems like a possible compromise on the petitioning side of it. On the other side, there are a lot of, there are many towns that request that an organization write a letter that's put in the town, the annual report, and Stu, you and I were talking about, I used to write the one for Lake Perrin. So we used to do that. And I think it's something we might want to consider doing again. I know it adds to the expense of printing, and maybe it's available online and a limited, a more limited, I don't know, printing in the office that people could pick it up. But it does seem to me like there's very good reason to ask what accomplishments are. I mean, it looks like for most towns, you have to, an organization would say why they, what they do for the community, how they're going to use the money that they're requesting, who's on their board of directors, who their chief operating officer is, list all the towns that they're requesting funding from and how much. And, you know, so it's a much more thorough rendering of why they're requesting that the town helps support them. And that just seems like a worthwhile thing for us to do, because then I think we could have informed voting.
And that process is yearly?
Yes.
Yes, that's not just one time, that's every year.
That is every year, and there are deadlines for it, and there are penalties if you don't get in your, everything from your tax information, your financials, to your write-up about what you're accomplishing. If those aren't in, then you aren't on the ballot the next year. So, you know, so it is, it is an agreement between the town and the organization that each will do their part. So I don't know.
And if I could just come back slightly on that. The example that I provided you was from the Vermont Center for Independent Living. And they essentially, based on our request, they provide what their chartered purpose of the organization is, what their requested amount is, comparing last year to the current year. They try to break out their FY, the previous year's fiscal costs versus what they're requesting this year. They do, VCIL does in fact, list all of the communities they get funding from. They do list their board of directors, and they show that breakdown of their costs and their revenue and expenditures to some degree. And then they do attach a current audit. They have always been very much in compliance with what we asked for. And so in a sense, we do our, I mean, Jeanne was kind enough to send the Manchester document to me, and I thought, oh my God. I would love not to do that with the 14 or 15 agencies that are on the ballot, to sit down and have to go through a contract like that. But if that's what the board desires, then that's what the staff will do. And, you know, this whole question came about because we were in a situation where we were about to require all of the agencies be petitioning, except one that came to the ballot last year. And we're trying to resolve, I guess, that question first. We have our mailing all set to go. We're just waiting for a decision on whether or not this policy that we currently have in place will change or be changed in some manner.
But Stu, the information that you sent to Jeanne and me did not request anything from organizations other than the financial information. What, when I went to your office today and looked at what people had, what different nonprofits had submitted, it's pretty variable. And I would argue that this is because, this is a statewide organization, and someone in Montpelier or some other community, this is a format that works for everyone. So, I mean, I don't, I'm not arguing that it needs, that what we need to do is adopt something that looks like Manchester's, but I think there are some very good pieces. And I know Chad and Carson and Jim, you didn't get a chance to see this. But I think, I mean, I think it's worth looking at how to build something that's maybe not quite as elaborate as this, but has the useful elements in it. Because many of the nonprofits sent the one page back that listed very little information.
Right. They tell us the board of directors and what they're asking for.
But that's what we asked them for, so, you know, yeah.
You're right.
So I don't know. So I would love for us to, I don't know if there's time this year to do it.
Well, with the annual report, I'd really sort of like to get that sort of same type of report every year that you could start this next year with the agencies, and have that reported, what they've done, you know, how we can come up with what we want to see for the bullets. And then at annual meeting time, we hand out the annual meeting booklets and the ballots for the next day. They'll have that information that they can take with them to the vote, and also for the discussion at the meeting. And it also seems that we want, as part of this process, for those agencies that are going to be the beneficiaries of the town's largess, that they come and speak to the annual meeting and give them some guidance of what we would like to see, and sort of have it uniform so that...
We can just give them a template.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly. It's information they have anyway. It's not, we're not asking them to move mountains, they're just filling out the form.
Right.
And then I think we've done our due diligence, and it gives the voters the opportunity to see what they're actually spending their money on, without burdening the management. Because I don't think that's needed for our management or for the agency's management. I'd rather see them spend their time and efforts out in the community doing what they're doing so well.
I just, one concern about that, I'm concerned that, you know, where the money is being spent, and I think one of the relevant questions that needs to be asked with each one of these organizations is what, if any, goals they have, and how do they measure success?
Yes, and I think it's very, I mean, the Manchester template says how will the money be spent in our community? So, I mean, I think we can be as specific as we want. I mean, we just looked at Manchester, but I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are a number of communities that have something similar out there.
I am also very interested in hearing from them. Filling out a form is a very valuable exercise as well, but are we prepared to listen to 14 nonprofits speak at the annual meeting?
Four minutes, right?
Yeah, I mean, bam, bam. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It might help, the agencies, too, knowing what they're going to have to say, and they're going to have to be present. And not, a lot of times, they come up and they're not sure what we want to hear or what the town wants to hear.
Agreed.
By having that template, I think they'll just, here it is, and if there are questions, and I think we can get through it a little quicker. But still, I think town meetings are supposed to be interactive anyway, and this might help if...
For three minutes. It's good. It's plenty of time.
And I also think that, in addition to that, it would be great if we made sure they knew they were welcome to come and, you know, and get on the agenda to make a short presentation anytime, not just at the annual meeting, and that we would love for them to do that.
Good point. Good point.
Are we going to make it a requirement?
No, I don't think it needs to be a requirement, but I, I mean, I get the feeling when we have someone here who has something wonderful to share, they, they want to do that. I think they sometimes don't really realize they can, or they're taking up our time, but-
First is in the back row.
Yeah. But I think, I think it would be just a great, we should welcome them, and, and make sure that they know that we have time on our agenda to accommodate them.
So, so, how can we get?
Well, to kind of answer this question and allow us to, to get the information out, if, if in fact, and I, I once again tonight confused Level Two with Level One, and I'm glad that none of you pointed it out to me.
But we knew.
Well, yes, I know, that's the way I am. If in fact, we're not going to require the petitioning of Level One funding people, which is 7,500 or less, but we want them to provide an annual, in a sense, a two-page, one or two-page annual report with some goals, we can amend the information we send out to them and ask them to include that with their application. We can perhaps reduce some of the requests for financial information, two or three years, tax, taxes, which is what previous boards have asked for, and, and it doesn't often get looked at. So we can reduce perhaps some of that burden and, and the amount of paper that piles up. Jeanie saw the file from last year's-
It wasn't huge, though. But that was all the organizations with-
Well, that was, yeah, those are the ones that were not petitioning.
Why do we want any of them to, why do we, what's the difference between, I mean, $7,500 is a lot of money, so I, the difference between 1,200 and 7,500, if you've done the initial petition, I'm not sure what we get by having an organization, I mean, so the language in the Manchester one gives the town the, the final say. If, if an organization sends a letter and says, "Hi, in lieu of petitioning, we'd like, this year, we'd like to be on the ballot," you know, "We petitioned three years ago," whatever, and the town says, "Okay, we're willing to do that," that's the town's prerogative. The town can also say, "Gee, it's been a long time since you've petitioned. It's been four years. I want you to petition again." You know, I, so I'm not sure why we're making the distinction between 7,500 and-
Well, that's, that's the, a previous board in 2012 made that distinction. And at that time, I think it was a means of keeping those smaller agencies from continuing ramping up their requests as, as a means of attempting to cap the amount of money that, that we pay out-
Right.
-to agencies over which we really have no fiscal control or responsibility, other than we can hear their report as to how they're spending the money, but-
But one could cap any, I mean, one could say, one could say, "You have to petition for the first year, and then after that, you can write a letter and request not to have to petition, as long as the amount has not changed."
If that's, if that's the direction you want to go, and, and you folks vote to do that, will do that, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get the answers to whether or not we're going to require a petition from anybody, because people are waiting to know, do they have to hit the streets and start gathering signatures? And that's, that's the question I'm trying to answer. And you have two levels here. You have the level that normally only is required to petition once every three years, and then you have the Level Two folks who are required to petition every year because they're over 7,500. And I, so I need, I'm looking for direction on how you want to change this policy. It's the board's policy, it's not the staff's policy.
Well, it's your pleasure, because frankly, I'd like to do away with the petitioning process altogether.
Me too.
So could we make a motion to require petitioning in the first year and a process by which one, an organization could write a letter and request not to have to petition in future years, as long as the amount requested does not change?
So giving up on the Level Two, Level One, Level Two?
Losing that distinction, which I'm not sure what the distinction is.
Well, it's the difference between the amount, 7,500.
No, I get that.
It feels to me it's been the only thing that's kept a lot of agencies from doubling or tripling their request amounts.
But I think with her proposal, is, as long as they don't change their amount, they're not having to petition. If they increase, then they'd have to petition anyway.
And that's the case now?
I'd like to just give a little historical perspective on this, because I was on the board when this, this changed.
Okay.
And it was, to the best of my recollection, it was Jason Morrissey who recommended this, because it really, our charitable donations from the town really was starting to balloon, and there was no accountability. We didn't know really where the money was being spent or how it was being spent, and it was a way for us to get some clarity with respect to the voters and our constituents on how they wanted their money spent. And we required that they, that these organizations gather signatures. And it was rather, I think it was like 500, wasn't it, Stu? It was required?
Well, that's 5% of the voters, whatever that turns out to be.
Yeah, back in then, those days.
It was very onerous.
Yeah, but that was before they could take it back.
You could glom together.
Right, right, right.
Now it's pretty much pointless.
But I, I just want to be clear on, that's enough of the historical perspective. I just want to be clear that we're still going to have some accountability with these folks with respect to, you know, how their money is spent, what their goals are, including salaries, and would not too find a detail, but I'd like to know how the money is being spent, and I think most of the people in Bennington-
Well, Stu has that information. I mean, the financial information we have, that's all we have, though. So for many of the organizations, the only thing in the file are the financials, three years' worth of financials. So, and I think Stu's point that we don't always go and look at that very carefully is well taken.
I guess one of the questions is, do you have it mandated, like Jim suggesting, or is it available upon request?
I think it should be mandated.
I think it should be in the annual report. I mean, not the, not their financials, but their one pager.
Yeah, it should just be one page, I think.
Yeah, if that, it may be a half page.
It used to be a half a page, right, Stu?
I'm still very reluctant to lose the one speed bump we have on keeping the spending down and keeping taxes down.
But what's the speed bump? Okay, so they, so Manchester has a 5,000, has a 5,000 cap above and below, and the only place they use it, the only place that they use it actually is how they give out the funds. If it's above 5,000, it's in two installments; if it's below, it's one. So what's the difference between saying, "Okay, everybody has to petition. I'm petitioning for 7,500 first year. Second year, I come back, and instead of needing to petition in year two, or three, or four, I write a letter and I say, 'I'm asking if I can waive that requirement this year and be put on the ballot, with the understanding that I need to supply the-"
The Temple of Korea.
Yeah, the, all the things, the financials, the board, the purpose, what I'm doing for the town, major accomplishments. So, and all that stuff has to be in by a certain date. And if it's not in by, if that material is not received by the town by a certain date, then the next year, they aren't on the ballot. I mean, so their, the accountability is that they are giving to the town and, and the taxpayers much more detailed information than they are now.
I'm a little confused why you're saying we would waive the petition if we're not asking them to petition.
Well, we could, yeah, we could either waive it, or we could say, "We only have to petition once, as long as you don't." I don't want to give up that, I think, say, an organization's been getting $10,000 a year for 10 years, and they're submitting all of their stuff every year, I would still like, I, it feels like this board should still have the right to say, "Gee, we think you should go back out to the voters and, and do another petition drive, because it's been 10 years since you last did this."
Okay, okay.
So I'm, I'm reluctant to give it up altogether, but it feels like it doesn't have to be-
It shouldn't be capricious, though. It should, it should be regular or not at all, arbitrary.
Right, I think for the, to be clear, from my point of view, the very first year that someone comes asking for 7,500 bucks or greater, that they have to gather those signatures.
Yes.
But, you know, here's the, the thing, if they're, they're able to get those signatures and the voters approve it, and they do that on a yearly basis, provided they provide us with the information and the financials, then we've done our job and the voters have spoken.
So it would be petition the first time?
Yeah.
Not, not petition if they were asking for the same amount year after year, and then maybe petition again every fifth year?
Or, or not have that in there at all. So the language that this select board, that the Manchester Select Board put in place was, "All organizations that received funding from town meeting in fiscal year 2017 and are requesting the same or less funding in fiscal year 2018 may request in writing that the Select Board insert an article by request for the 2017 town meeting warning in an amount not to, not more than the amount approved in the year before, without having to submit a petition as otherwise required by statute." So, and there's a date by which you have to do that. So, so they're asking, so, and I don't know if that becomes a burden to every year get a request saying, "We would like not to have to petition this year."
But if it's, if it's the same amount, there's a non-
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that, that would be burdensome if that, if that's the policy we're, we're going to follow. I don't think that's burdensome. As it is now, we, we have a specific date, it's generally in and around December 10th, that we want these applications in, because when I present the manager's budget to you folks for approval, I want to be able to tell you what the agency requests are, so that you understand the implication of all of those agencies either being on the ballot or, or in the budget, depending on the libraries and those others that we may in fact place in the budget, that we treat a little differently, because we actually sit down with, with many of them and talk through what their requirements are and, and what they're up to, so to speak. So I, I don't think that creates a problem for us. I just, I think I understand what you're looking for. I'll pull that Manchester piece off my computer and put some of the wording changes into our application form and format, and we'll get that out to the agencies. And from my perspective, if you all agree, we're not going to ask anybody to petition this year who was approved last year-
Right.
-as long as their requests are not greater than what they were approved for.
Exactly.
Okay?
Should Stu, in this letter, say that we're going to require them to come to the annual meeting and make a very short petition?
Oh, yeah, there's got to be, I think, in the template, no-
We'll break that out, and we'll also, we'll also indicate that, that whether or not you're required to petition in a given year is really at the board's discretion.
That's where, that's where I can meet you. I'm, I am still reluctant to, to go this route, very reluctant, but I would do it for a year, because we have to get this letter out and we have to get our, our ballot put together. So I'm, I'm willing to, to see us go this year, but I, I don't want this to become a standing policy until we've had a little, a little more experience.
Be clear with me, if you would, about your reluctance, Don.
Well, here's a, here's a random hypothetical. Suppose, suppose an organization does a petition, they're doing good work, they have some change of staff, they start doing poor work, their work goes downhill, eventually they're not spending any money in Bennington, but they, they still are on the ballot, and they still get a bye, because they don't have to get the signatures, they just keep going out and getting the signatures. Presumably, they lose in the ballot, you know, at, at the ballot, but, but that's not been our experience, is that not very many things get turned down at, at the ballot. So it feels to me that there should be some regular effort on the part of every organization that's asking for taxpayer money to go back to the taxpayers and re-up the commitment of, of people in the form of signatures.
Well, you bring up something that I had not contemplated, and that is where the money's being spent.
Yeah, but you know, we-
And I think that's an important consideration.
It is, Jim, but I think, you know, we cannot micro-
You're right.
... these, these agencies, as long as they give us sufficient information so that we, as the voters, because I think that's what we're, it's standing in this debt, would be comfortable. And if they're going south because they're not providing good services, well, I think, I'm not sure that a petition, the lack thereof, is going to make a difference. I think it's when they come to the Select Board that meeting, or when the annual report comes out, they're going to have to make their, their pitch. And if they don't come with a competent, clear manner, I think they're going to have some problems.
Yep.
But I, I agree that policies are, should be looked at more frequently than every five, 10 years. And maybe we should, I don't want to put a sunset on this, but I think it should be revisited.
What, I'd like to talk about what you just said, Don. So let's just say that that happened. There was an agency who financially, you know, when we were looking at this paperwork that comes in, things aren't looking too rosy. The Select Board basically has no recourse or-
That's what you're suggesting, and to me, it feels like-
Exactly. I mean, we might be able to identify what's happening, but-
Well, but we're not, we're not saying that, because the, I mean, the specific language we can use is that an organization can request not to have to petition, but that is at the discretion of the, of the town.
But I agree with Tom, if, let's just say that happened and we required them to go out and petition, they'll get the signatures.
They will, and so what really makes the difference is an informed voter.
Well, I know.
You know.
That's the part I could do.
That's the part, yeah.
And you and I have been talking about this for a long time, and I do agree, I think annual meetings are good, town meetings are a good place to do it, I think something written, I think a, a one-page financial summary, how the money's spent, is it spent in Bennington, all that stuff is good information, doesn't have to be long, doesn't have to be three years of taxes. I, I think every voter deserves that information. Totally agree with you on that.
Yeah.
I, I still think, though, that-
Should revisit it, every, every three years?
That it should be revisited on a regular basis.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, and maybe what we should do is think about looking at this in July or August, so that, and see how, see if it looked any different.
I mean, we could, we could alter the process this year, as you suggested, Donald, and, and see how it goes, see what kind of information we actually gather, and whether you think that's enough, and, and then talk about this perhaps during the midpoint of the following year. One, one of the things that I like about having the board have the discretion on a specific agency, if in fact you think an agency's in trouble and you think they maybe ought to get out there, you're talking about one agency gathering 469 signatures, not 10 agencies trying to gather 469 signatures. So you really are putting the onus back on that individual agency to go out and show us that the community still cares enough to place the money on the ballot.
Yeah, if the Select Board's paying attention and, and has the guts to make a hard call. That's right.
And I will, will, will provide you with the information, whether or not you read it and have the guts.
Yeah. All right. All right, so I can live with this for one year. I would love it if it could be in the letter, that, that this is, this is a, this is a pilot project, this is a one-year pilot project.
And should, could we hear from anyone in the public that might have some concerns, comments relative to, if you have a concern to, as to this discussion, which may not be easy to follow?
I just want to say one.
Yes. Could you just stand and identify yourself that, yeah, we don't have the rotating mic yet, right mic?
No rotating.
Okay.
That's your budget.
Yep.
So, Libby Harris.
Hi, Libby.
So as a voter, what you're saying is, the voters have a list in front of them of all of these nonprofit agencies. How does the average voter know who they are?
Yeah.
And if they're worthy? Or is the town saying, "They've petitioned, and we approved the petition, therefore we're advising the vote?"
No, so Libby, right now, you get no information. There is, the, we do not require organizations to provide us with anything other than their financials. So what we're saying is, we want them to provide that information in writing, and also to come to the annual, to the annual meeting and present, so that the voters do have information to make a, an informed decision when they vote.
So the voters would get all of that information?
Yes, and, and right now, you are not getting that information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a wonderful idea.
It's an excellent question, excellent question, and you, you're a very educated person, and it'd be very easy to mistake a list of agencies in the town report as sanctioned agencies that the town has sanctioned, and, and it would be even more easy to feel that if there were no speed bumps or no signatures along the way, and we just kept letting them go year after year. So I, I thank you for that comment.
Thank you. I think it's a great process.
Do you need further direction?
I'm good, if you're all good.
There's just one thing on the wording, and it just could be nitpicking, but as I said, we didn't want to, you know, petition if there was a change in the amount. I said, we didn't want to, you know, petition if there was a change in the amount. I would like to say either equal to or less than, there's no, because if someone's requesting less, we don't want to make them petition.
And that, and that is the way-
Oh, yes.
Can we actually give them a gold star?
Yeah.
I think they get, they get some kind of, yeah, maybe if they-
Tom, should we have, I know we could go into the town office and look at the paperwork, but should we get them as they come in, the paperwork, so we can just peruse them quickly as a Select Board?
I think it's probably going to be, we'll have to take that initiative ourselves.
Okay, just to go in and look at them.
Because otherwise, we'd almost create a meeting.
Well, if, I, I, excuse me, if we, if we reduce the size of the packet that we need to provide to you, when we, when we have them all in place and we make sure that everything is there that should be there, we can send a packet on to you and, and you're given Select Board packet or outside the packet, so you have all that information.
But I'd like to do it not piecemeal, I'd rather have it-
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather have it all together because then you get to see what the total amount is as opposed to-
An important, Libby almost pointed this out, you know, historically it'd be, if there's a list and the Select Board supports all of these agencies, you know, are we saying we support all of the agencies as a board? And, you know, not everyone maybe feels that way. When it's a petition, we don't have any choice. When it's a non-petition, then I think we are saying to the voting public, "We support these entities."
Now, how is that different than now, because we do not make organizations petition every year, but they go on the ballot?
And we're saying we support you for the next three years, or whatever it is.
Right, right, right.
Could we include some kind of language in, in the requirements that would say in effect, and I'm just, you know, being a little ham-fisted about it right now, but, you know, funding will, funding requests will be subject to approval by the Select Board.
By the voters.
The voters, actually, yeah.
Yes, the voters.
Right, but-
Yeah, I, I think-
Re-application, maybe something along those lines.
Well, I, I think this year we're going to tell the agencies, "Look, you don't have to petition this year, but we're going to look for some different information from you. That information will be provided to the Select Board, and, and the Select Board will determine whether or not to accept your information." I think this year we're going to accept it pretty much if it meets all of the guidelines. If it doesn't meet the guideline, then they would have to petition, I would think.
Correct.
Or if they asked for more money than they got in the previous years. So.
I think we're all saying the same thing. Let's, let's see what that looks like, the questionnaire, and if we, if anyone has thoughts that they would like to see in here. But I'd love to get the annual report that I can just go, "That agency, that agency," and read about it, and hear about it, and ask questions about it, and also give the agency the templates so that they know the kind of questions they're going to get in a three minutes.
Agreed. And what, what I would suggest that we do is not append it to the annual report of the town, but create a separate annual, agency annual report that can be distributed at the floor meeting.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Have it available at the polls on the town meeting day.
Well, I'd ask the town clerk what we can put in.
Make it a PDF and send it out.
All right, I'm ready.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Everyone else?
Check.
Let's move into the deliberative session relative to the solar matters projects that we heard about last week at the special meeting. Step right up, your time, that's all right.
Hi, I'm Lynn Mazza. I'm actually a VCIL employee, and I have a bunch of the other agencies waiting for my email tomorrow morning to tell them whether or not we need to go out on a petition drive. So if I'm understanding, no petition unless we're asking for an increase or if it's the first year.
Yes.
But we're going to need to, to be submitting a full, or not a full, but you guys will tell us what we need to submit in terms of-
Something like this.
Financials and goals and all that, and then we'll need to come here and present to kind of spread the word to the community. And that'll be put in a booklet, which then will also be-
Available. That's great.
Do you want my chair?
Nice one.
That was very good.
That's the plan.
And then it's a one-year, one-year thing. We're going to try it this year and see how it goes.
And see how that goes.
Revisit it next year. And Donald's going to love the process, and we're all going to agree on it for another year.
I, I have to tell you, I've collected petitions in the past, and a lot of people, even if they don't support, you know, they'll see an agency on there that they don't necessarily support, they'll sign the petition because they support democracy. And they're saying, "Oh, well, it's just to get it on the ballot." Well, I can get it on the ballot and vote no then. So, I'm really, really thankful that this change, I think, is for the better.
Thanks a lot. That's really helpful. You capsulize it very well, captured. Again, let's talk about the, the solar projects. We had a special meeting chaired by my vice chair because of my recusal responsibility, and I'll do the same. This is Battle Creek 1 and Chelsea Solar Projects. Your deliberative session, which basically means that you'll have a discussion amongst yourselves and decide what you want to do at this point. So I'll turn it over to Donald.
Thank you, Tom. So, as I understand, the planning commission met, would you like to report anything out to us before?
Yeah, we do agree.
Okay, thank you.
So, they did meet with regard to Battle Creek 1 and Chelsea Solar. They have the following comments, recommendations to the Select Board. With regard to Battle Creek 1, they did recommend, subject to Donald's discussion, the knotted fence as opposed to the chain link fence. If there, if a fence was installed, they prefer that, and they agreed that that would make the most sense out of the two fences. Very minor issue. Second minor issue is Brad Wilson did offer to choose a different species in the Cranberry Bush Viburnum because it's, as it was noted, it's, it's not going to survive, and they asked that a similar native plant be substituted. Again, very minor issues. The big issue was that they requested that the, they recommended that the Select Board request that the Public Utilities Commission provide as a condition to the certificate for public good, that any vegetation that is cut on the parcel to the east would have to come back for an amendment because they have submitted testimony that that project is not visible from Route 7A and those businesses and with, with the existing vegetation in place. Not to say that cutting some of that vegetation wouldn't be okay, but if they do, we'd like to have an opportunity to comment on that as a community and have the Public Utilities Commission take another look at that with a, with a visual impact analysis. So that's Battle Creek 1. I'll go ahead and do Chelsea while I'm up here, so you guys are going to have to listen to me again. The, the planning commission was very clear and very adamant that the 10-acre limitation on independent or cumulative size of, of solar facilities is the clear intent of the town plan and should be enforced. So that, that kind of ends the discussion right there, but they did say if there are other issues, there are other issues discussed. There are, there is concern about visibility from Route 7 because they don't have the full, they didn't have the full visual analysis report that you folks have had, and they're also concerned about visibility from neighbors, especially the neighbor to the east. But again, the discussion really stops at the 10-acre limitation issue. So that's the recommendations to the Select Board.
Dan, Dan, a question. What about the 10, the reduction of the setback along the railroad right away?
They said as long, thank you very much. They've consistently supported that, the reduction to two of that setback, especially if the vegetation remains on the, on the parcel.
And it was 50 to 10, just?
50 to 10, I believe.
50 to-
Now, remember, that 10 is 10 from the easement property line, not from the railroad line. The property, the railroad line, railroad right away is probably at least 50 feet wide there. So, 50 feet, probably 20 feet from center, then another 10, so.
Dan, before you can stand up, so to be clear, I love it when the planning commission goes rogue, but they were, they were recommending that any vegetation that gets cut would be subject to forestry, agriculture, any, any cutting of any vegetation on that eastern parcel.
I think the concern is, the concern is that, you know, they, this may get mired down, and they may want to get some sort of financial benefit from that property, maybe agriculture, maybe forestry. And before that happens, I'm not saying it shouldn't happen, and it definitely can happen, but we should have an opportunity as a community to, to comment on the visibility that that may cause or not cause of, of that project. And the evidence they've shown to us is, is aesthetic analysis with all vegetation in place. And if that's going to change somehow, it would be appropriate for this community to have-
And that, if we want a buffer there, that would be the time to ask for it, is what the planning commission's suggesting.
I mean, it's, we figured, we went back and forth, how wide should the buffer be? Where should it be? Well, you know, they've submitted evidence of what it looks like in its current condition, and that's how it should stay unless, unless it's approved by the Public Utilities Commission as an amendment. So that's their suggestion.
I like it.
And can you just clarify setback?
So the, the, well, what I had pushed for last, at the last meeting, not pushed for, but suggested was that we, we ask for a buffer on the parcel that's east of the railroad, railroad, so that if, if we're allowing them to go up to 10 feet from the railroad tracks, it seemed like it made sense to do something to screen in case they clear cut for agriculture, clear cut for forestry, or, or clear cut for some other project that they were doing. What the planning commission's suggesting is going a lot further than what I was lobbying for, which was sort of a 50 to 100-foot buffer, and saying, maybe make the whole parcel a buffer. Not a buffer, make the whole parcel subject to future consideration if they want to cut on it.
Okay.
If they want to cut anything on it, that's what the planning commission's suggesting. So, just to be clear, no forestry, no invasive species removal, no, you know, it's a pretty strong recommendation.
Can I put a motion on the floor?
Sure.
Motion to follow planning commission's recommendations on Battle Creek 1 and Chelsea.
Okay, motions on the floor. Would anybody like to second that?
I'll second it.
All right, let's do discussion. You, you've made the motion to do it for both. I guess we could do discussion in any order, but is there any discussion on Battle Creek 1? Any, any further concerns about that? I, I do have some very minor concerns about, I spoke to Dan earlier about this, but about glare from the solar panels. The, the study that they did showed glare report on 279 and on Route 7. Didn't show it from the monument, and it didn't show it from the airport. I assume that they will have to get an agency of transportation waiver or something with the airport, that there would be no interference from planes coming in. So, but I would love to, I'd love to add, if we're going to follow their recommendation, I'd like to add my concerns about that. I think I'm still a little, a little unresolved about the mid-size mammalian wildlife. I think a six-inch fence is a good size, but we know there are a lot of bobcats in that area. They wouldn't fit through that fence. They couldn't feed at the edge of the water. So, I continue to have some concerns about, about the wildlife, although I am glad that they are at least using a wildlife fence instead of a standard chain link fence.
Were you able to do any research on your own about the solar array that you were referencing?
I didn't get very far. I did find a number of solar tracker companies that, that don't install fences, but it's more like the individual solar tracker units, you know, the ones that move with the sun. This is, it's different from this. I couldn't find any commercial-scale solar facilities-
That were not.
...that did not use a fence. Yeah, so I'm, I'm discouraged on that front. But nor have I had a chance to talk to a, a wildlife specialist who does, who specializes in mammals. So the wildlife person from the Agency of Natural Resources that came out was focused on crayfish and, and vascular plants and things like that. I'm not sure that wide-ranging mammals were part of that consideration.
I was a little concerned that wildlife could get stuck, think they can get through and then can't get through, and they get stuck.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
I also am a little tentative because the site visit is December 4th, and I'm a visual person, as we all know. And I want to, I want to go up to the public house and just look.
Well, I would love to clarify your motion a little bit, Carson, if possible. You know, I think that options in front of us are to, with either of these, and you've suggested we treat them together, but, but with either of them, we could decide to make a motion of support, to make a motion against, or to take no action. And it seems to me those are kind of our three action, three, three things that are available to us. I'm not sure everybody else's feeling about Chelsea, but I see no reason why we would support that at this point personally. It, it doesn't fit with our town plan language, and we've already been down this road. So, I, I would, I would actually-
We can separate them.
I would be interested in separating your motion.
Not just talking circles on it. So we can separate them. If we want to look at Battle Creek 1 versus Chelsea, I think we all would, I mean, it's not, I know my decision on Chelsea, and that hasn't really changed from before. I think it's, the 10-acre piece is a real-
It's a deal breaker.
It's a deal breaker, not to mention-
I've got a concern that goes to both Jean and something that you just said, Don, that I really hadn't contemplated, but that Brad did tell us at an earlier meeting that they had changed the, the solar panels so that they were less reflective. Do you recall?
Not on Battle Creek.
On Chelsea only.
Yeah.
Only on Chelsea, not on Battle Creek. And you know what, frankly, none of us, as far as I know, has actually seen a sample of what this glass looks like. And I think going forward, that we should have a sample of it to see just how non-reflective it is, not just take his word for it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I would like some further reassurances on that, but I do think that if you, if we split these motions, we could do a motion on Battle Creek that would, would get, talk about the planning commission's recommendations to get rid of the Viburnum, to do no cutting of vegetation on the parcel east of, of the Battle Creek 1 parcel, and to perhaps use the, I'm not sure quite how we phrase it, but use the best available technology to kind of figure out what the wildlife needs might be for that area, and, and also just ask for a minor expansion on the glare study to include the monument and the airport. But other than that, I, I would think that that might be a, a project that would, would have my support.
So are we looking for a motion just on Battle Creek 1, for, against?
How's everybody feel about that?
I'd say-
Let's, let's, let's do a little withdrawal of the first motion, I guess.
Okay, we're withdrawing. Withdraw the first motion, we'll just go after Battle Creek 1.
Can she, second, you've got to withdraw your second.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Well, you have to withdraw it.
Oh, withdraw my second, yes, yes.
I think the goal is to just kind of keep this moving forward. And so, is Battle Creek 1 we're just talking about now, is the motion to go with the planning commission's recommendations in addition to researching the, maybe some components about glare relating to the airport and the monument?
And wildlife.
Some assurance that there will not be an undue impact, glare impact on the monument and the airport, and that there will not be a unnecessary, yeah, impact on mammal species, large mammal species.
So my chair would vote the setback, should we just want to forget that?
So personally, I feel fine about them going right up to the edge of the railroad. That's a very highly impacted area anyway, and it's, it's very scrubby. But how's the board feel about that 10-foot setback? No problem with the 10? Okay.
So, just, are we going to have any, I mean, was it V Trans who came back, or who ended up making kind of some, some waves about that one?
It is, V Trans has made a motion to intervene in a memorandum in support of their motion to intervene. They are opposed to the reduction in the setback, and they will be arguing their position at the Act 248 process.
So they're here, they'll hear the fact that we don't, it doesn't bother us to be 10 feet away, or, but-
Yeah, that's, it's a concern for them, but not necessarily for us or the planning commission.
Okay.
See, we're deliberative right now, so we, we're just going to stick with the board at this point, Libby. Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration of that.
What, what exactly is the motion?
Well, we broke it apart with Battle Creek 1, and we just kept adding things on, but right now it sounds like, do you want me to go through all the different pieces of it?
I want to know if we're voting to approve, if we're voting to hold, if we're, what are we voting for?
I think we're voting in favor with consideration.
With stipulations.
And I'm concerned, do we really want to spell out specific things about glare? There may be things, I'm concerned about not being inclusive enough.
We don't have to take an action at all on this. We could take no action-
Okay.
...if we want to, and we could just let the minutes of this meeting speak to our concerns. If we think it's a good project, which I do, we could, we could do sort of a conditional vote of support, which would be, we would support this project under these conditions, and we could also, I think, take a vote of non-support.
And we have the conditions that we've gone through, which are the ones that the planning commission- planning commission mentioned, and then you further mentioned the idea of larger mammals, the monument glare, the airport glare, or potential for glare from the project. Was there any other ones that you...
Well, just the 10-foot, and we approved the 10-foot setback, which was part of what came forth through the planning commission, yeah. And so, so is that a motion? Or is that a motion to...
A motion to...
Support?
Support.
The project under those conditions?
Yes.
Is that clear, Jean?
Nothing to do about Chelsea at this point, just Battle Creek.
Motion to support the Battle Creek project, following the planning commission's recommendations, and asking for additional information and reassurance on the subjects of glare and...
Large mammals.
And mammal.
Yeah, I'm fine, as long as if we're not satisfied with what they bring back, we have an opportunity to say we don't support it anymore.
I think we're...
As long as that's in place.
It's a conditional, it's a conditional vote, yes.
Chad just said second it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
You're trying so hard to make this work.
All right, just keep going. Talking circles on this all the time.
In favor of the Battle Creek, of offering conditional support to the Battle Creek project, support by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so conditional support for the Battle Creek 1 project. Now on Chelsea, I would certainly accept a motion on, I think, what is our shared sentiments on that, if anyone has one?
To not support.
A motion to reject it.
Okay, so...
Motion to reject.
Motion to reject the project, and I presume ask our attorney to pass that, those sentiments on to the Public Utilities Commission? Okay, so any second for that?
Second.
Jean, second. Any discussion? We're tired of that one. Okay.
You bet.
Vote it.
All in favor of rejecting support for that project and sending, asking our attorney to send something to the Public Utilities Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, I think that's it for tonight, Tom.
Thank you very much. Very good. Way to move it along. Carson.
Keep your shirt on.
We're doing this. We've got one through it.
Man, I have to put my own heart on it.
Well done. The next item is the manager's report.
And I have nothing for you tonight, really.
Okay.
La di da.
So we have, Jean, you have other business?
Um, I do not.
You do? Well, don't go away yet, folks, we have an executive session. Carson?
I do, I want to note the passing of two rather iconic figures, for those of us of a certain vintage. And that is Barbara Palladino, the wife of Paul Palladino, who was the original owner of Paul's Fish Fry. I can tell you that as a kid, going to the Fish Fry was quite a treat. And the first time that I ever had a Fish Fry was at Paul's, packed in my parents' station wagon along with my dog, and in a funnily ironic way, I was hooked on fish. And for those, I remember it was, was not a cheap event to go to the Fish Fry. And Mrs. Palladino stood at the counter taking orders. And at the totaling up of your bill, and mine was a Fish Fry and a vanilla shake that you needed a vacuum to draw the shake out of, because it was so thick. But anyway, Mrs. Palladino would say, "That's only $27." And it wasn't really $27, but in the early, late 70s and early 80s, it was expensive. And I remember that they, they ran the place with absolute military precision and efficiency. But I just want to note that the Palladinos were a wonderful family that contributed a great deal to the town, if only in taxes, but in a place that brought people together. And I want to express my condolences to Paul and Kim and Randy and Dominic. Secondly, we lost Ted Linu, who was a police officer in the town of Bennington from the time that I was a little boy. And thankfully, I never had to cross paths with him.
Oh, sure.
But he was...
Oh, sure.
No, I never did. He used, but when I had the car, he was a regular. He would come and buy a burger for both he and his wife, one each. And he would contact, as a matter of fact, I spoke to him about three weeks ago about a concern that he had, and brought it to Stu's attention and called him back. And he was as full of life as I remembered him. And he, his passing was quite sudden. But I just want to say that Ted was one of the good guys.
He was your foot patrolman, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was. Yeah. He was one of the good guys.
Thank you, Jim. Those are very thoughtful comments about both of those folks. I do want to remind that the town, as well as the board, that the town charter review committee is meeting at a forum tomorrow at 5:30 here. It's doing excellent work. The review is very deliberative, thoughtful, and I think Stu and Dan can attest to the effort that these members are putting in. They would love to hear from the community as far as what, and they'll bring the community up to date on their work. But again, it's tomorrow night, it's a public forum here at the fire facility at 5:30, probably an hour, an hour and a half at most, and it's looking for public comment. And I'm hoping that we will actually hear from the committee sometime in December.
Do you know what their agenda is for tomorrow?
I think it's going to be an overview, trying to basically bring the public up to date on where they're at, because they're almost through the process. I think they'll have another section or two.
Yeah, I think they're actually, well, the sections that remain are the zoning section, the section on water, and then the section having to do with opportunities to consolidate by the other...
You going to cover it, Mike?
None.
Cool.
Are you going to be here, Mike? That's great. So that's great for the community. So we hope to hear from them with a report and recommendations sometime during December. That's at least the present hope. Everything we're talking about is a plan, because we know how consolidated a lot of these timelines are. But we really would like to make sure that the community is informed, educated, so the community can make a decision relative to the charter and its components in March. Yeah? Which may be up to, do you have any different...
No, I think it's great. I think that, you know, notice to the community, let's keep this on the radar, because if this does come up in March, you know, we have quite a good period of time between now and then to do a deep dive and figure out what it really means. They've done some tremendous work, it looks like from afar anyway, and they've really worked very, very hard at it. So hopefully, there's something good there.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think in that sort of agenda-building unfinished discussions thing, it was, that was a difficult conversation with the Masonic Temple folks, and then it was interesting getting the email from VAE, the Vermont Arts Exchange, a great organization that I strongly support. But I'd love to, you know, take that conversation a little bit further, if there's something we can do, or if there's a, something else, some other way that we could be helpful on that. It was, it was disappointing not to sort of offer them what they wanted, but then it was quite interesting to see the email that there may be partnerships already afoot. So...
I did email the gentleman, I don't remember his name, I apologize. I think the very next day, with the things that were running through my head, suggestions and thoughts that I had.
Jeanie sent a lengthy email. You sent a lengthy email, it was very detailed. It was good.
I didn't get it. I didn't.
You didn't get it?
You sent it, right?
He replied?
Oh, no, 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 no. You sent the original email.
Yeah.
Oh. Jeanie wrote a very detailed email to the gentleman on suggestions.
Oh, I thought he replied.
Like, no, I thought you sent it, I was going to say...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wrote it, but I did not hear back. That doesn't mean he didn't read it, but I didn't hear back.
Does anyone know if the YMCA followed up with people from the Masonic Lodge?
You know, I didn't mean to bring this up as a discussion item now, as much as just a sort of an agenda item that I'd like to not lose track of. So I don't know anything really other than what we've seen in the emails, though.
I just want to say thank you to the town, to the Bennington Downtown Alliance for lovely holiday decorations.
Indeed.
They are beautiful.
And a very small-town staff put them up this year, right? And it went there, about three of them or four of them that were sort of having to do extra duty to get them up.
I couldn't actually tell you how many of our crew joined together to do that, but they do a great job.
If you drive through other communities and you see our holiday decorations, it's quite impressive for our staff community.
Very impressive.
Yeah, that's, we really make sure...
If nothing else, you can feel festive when you go out of your office or your home. Chad?
Couple things real brief. I wanted to congratulate, we had a couple of new officers just graduated from the Vermont Police Academy. And knowing that it's not an easy task, I want to congratulate them and welcome them aboard, and good luck. I'm assuming they're in post-basic now, doing their other Rappel stuff, but are they out on patrol yet?
No, they still have some additional work to do at the academy before they actually are cut loose.
Gotcha. So congratulations, welcome aboard. The other thing is the football team, we, this is personal, we wrapped up our season last Monday, that's why I wasn't at the meeting, and we had our banquet at the country club. And just want to say thank you to the community, my first year taking over as head coach, and the support was just overwhelming. I've been coaching for eight years, but knowing every little detail as a head coach is thank you and appreciate it, appreciate the support from home games to parents to emails, well wishes, and I can't say thank you enough, so thank you.
Is Troy in Cambridge going to be on your schedule next year?
Unfortunately, don't play New York teams statewide. We have to go to North Country next year, which is a four-hour bus ride. So if anyone would like to maybe donate some hotel rooms up north, I'd take that as well.